Tony Strickhauser.
Do we have to, you did it. That's fine, okay. We're on it. Okay, November 13th, 4:01, we'll call the meeting to order. Well, we'll call planning commission members. Abby Dollman here, Power Trips.
Here.
Joey Edwards and Jamie Seifer are not here. Heather Lind here. County Commissioners, I don't see any present. Wish they were in the meeting all day long, so.
Yeah, I think they were hoping to have a look at our pass. I told them we were just doing updates, so.
Approval of minutes, we have October 3rd and October 23rd. Uh, let me check for them really quick here. The ones on the 3rd and the ones I question. No, the three of us were there on the 3rd. Oh, yeah, Howard doesn't have her on the 23rd, so we'll have to, we'll have to um, table the 23rd, but we can do the minutes from the 3rd.
We approve the minutes from October 3rd.
Second.
Okay, on paper, aye?
Aye. I forgot that I'm taking minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, Cece's not feeling well, so.
She asked if it's possible she does minutes on the recording.
Oh, okay, well, I'll take a couple notes for real quick and then she can. She.
Okay. Great. And then we move down to the staff updates. We have OHB and short-term rental work.
Great. So today, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you all a link to the Teams um, documents, and then you can look at as much of the OHB information as you would like. But we had a work session today with the Board of County Commissioners. And um, staff's conducted a pretty thorough investigation. And in OHB's work has been looking at um, motorized, non-motorized, commercial, and public use on county roads. From our, from that kind of standpoint, from all those different um lenses. And we've engaged, we've had a listening section, a listening session with the community, where we, you know, we really heard that locals um uh, very strongly support the existing ordinance or the old ordinance that allowed them to go from their point A to point B is how we refer to it. But from your home to a recreational destination. And that really continues to be, we've got like four, I think we've got um, we've got numerous pages of public comment that we can put in Teams if you'd like to look at it. We'll just have the resource available. You can be as engaged as you'd like to be. But we want to definitely make sure that you know about the information that we've been working on. Um, and so we went out to um, we did that listing session. Then we went to all um, to clubs. We went to representatives from the snowmobile club, from the wheelers, from um, representative that kind of did other non-motorized use. Um, then we went and interviewed the four companies that operate in Lake County to get, to gain their perspective. We talked with the Forest Service. Um, which, and then the work internally has worked with law enforcement, um, PROS, which is now Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. Um, that's a new department in the county. Um, emergency management and Public Works. And of course Bryce has done a huge amount of mapping on the issue. So, we have a um, we're creating what's called the Road Use Guide, which is the map that Bryce has um, already put a tremendous amount of work into. And it's really awesome because it, um, I'll let him kind of tell you a little bit about it. Um, but I'll tell you about the rest of the process real quick and then come back to the map. The map is such a great tool. It's gonna help us right now as we look to do a permit process to allow commercial users to use county roads. But it'll also provide an amazing tool for long-term planning. Because there's a discussion about the carrying capacity of the county and what is sustainable for allowing more commercial motorized use in Lake County on county roads. And so where this work, whenever, when this topic came up, there really wasn't any other department that was really used to creating regulation um and processes. And so the, the work really landed in CPW. But the hope is that we're creating the tools for the county to use to regulate, to regulate and oversee, and then to make some data collection um tools that we can pass the work off to PROS. And that eventually, this will be more of a recreation sustainability conversation. Um, but we've created the, the ordinance and the processes associated with it. So we're updating the regulation to incorporate commercial use. It never, it was silent about commercial. And so we incorporated a whole new permitting process with standards and findings that must be made in order to hold a permit to operate on county roads. Um, so that was part of the tool development. The other ongoing piece is a local registration program. That's just a sticker that you can get the same time you get your CPW sticker. And it's just a way for us to capture local users and create that database. Um, it'll be a nominal fee, but it'll be an opportunity to give people a map and, and the rules in Lake County. Um, so really nice kind of useful tour locally. And then one of the pain points that we're hearing is that there's rental companies that um, on the front range, Summit County and Buena Vista, Chape County, that are renting equipment and those machines are coming in and they, and there's kind of a, definitely we're hearing kind of a resounding theme that um, that, that those rentals are having a, a negative impact. So then we'll have the ability to kind of gauge who's in a county, who's using what. And um, then we'll be able to um, add that information into um, kind of that handoff to PROS. And then they can do that carrying capacity study as sustainability. So what we are looking for, the first regular meeting in December is buy-in from the Board on all of the laws. So we can go ahead and get the ordinance going and put these tools into work. Um, we're also doing youth engagement. We're looking to do some programming with PROS at the OHB track. And just, you know, having some alternatives. And our OHB track, I've heard, is a really amazing amenity. And so offering more youth programming up there too, maybe some educational opportunities. There's gonna be an uptick in enforcement from law enforcement, but they're not really publishing what that means to render it a little less effective. Um, we also talked about ways that we could divert um, the use like on the Mineral Belt Trail and adjacent to the Mineral Belt Trail from public users. And first we had thought about barricades of some type, some, some sort or some kind of obstruction. Um, but they're hard to maintain, it's extremely dangerous. So we have um, emergency management, and what about some landscaping along the Mineral Belt? We thought, well, maybe that would enhance the experience both for the Mineral Belt and maybe be a deterrent. Um, so it lends something, to be something that we probably look for some kind of grant funding to do something like that, because I'm sure it'd be incredibly expensive. Um, but it might be a way to also kind of enhance the Mineral Belt experience too for the community. So, we're just trying to kind of look at, so there's future work to be done, but we're creating a starting point. And our pain point was that we have zoning, which prohibits outfitting and guiding in the IM Zone District. But all of the outfitting and guiding that's being done is exclusive to the roadways. And so zoning doesn't regulate that. And so now they'll have a permitting process whereby you have to get a permit to use the county roads. And the highest concentrations, of course, are the East Side Mining District and around the lake. And then I'll let Bryce kind of talk about that, because this mapping tool is amazing. In fact, do you want me to let you screen share?
I'm just gonna.
Already got it.
Okay. The out-of-county commercial, so will they be getting licenses here in county? Yes, so they'll be required to have this sticker um program. And the, the current commercial operations in town have all offered to help us locate those and create a mailing list so that we can send the ordinance to them, notify them that if they're gonna have machines in Lake County or encourage rental use in Lake County, if their machines are in Lake County, they must have the sticker program, um, and they have to participate and have those present. And we're talking about a very nominal fee for uh, Lake County residents and a little bit higher fee, something similar like a $25 to $30 per machine for rental companies. And like a $5 to $10 registration fee for locals. And the way that we can determine, will, will your license, which type of license you get or registration you get, will be based on your CPW registration. So if your CPW is, is local, then you qualify for a local. And if it's, if your CPW registration is out of county, then you have to do those out of county rates.
Is there somewhere where, because I know when you were speaking of the people using it along the Mineral Belt Trail and on the Mineral Belt Trail, seeing both recently. Um, we're, and, and I know that the future idea is that the Forest Department will offer some sort of programming for you. But I know the majority of those users are the kids, and mine's probably been one of them. And trying to understand like where they find, this is what you're allowed to do, this is what you're not allowed to do. Because it's not clear, because it's just been used for so long. So this adult's telling you, you're allowed to do this, and this person's telling you, allowed to do this, and then I'm telling you, you can't do that. You know what I mean? Like, and where, is there a place that's easily accessible until the maps and stuff like that come out with the rules that we can be, you know, helping these guys out? Especially if law enforcement's gonna try to start.
Cut.
Cut. And I'm sure they're gonna do it in an educational way, but it'd be nice to help them out too, as far as how do we?
Absolutely.
How do we help out by creating, like, is there a way we can have a page? You know, I just, I'm wondering, very basic rules. Like, if they're not supposed to be riding next to the Mineral Belt Trail, are they allowed to be riding on the road? And if so, is there an age restriction? Like, I don't know, I don't even know what that is. I don't even know what the rule is. So.
So we'll be working with law enforcement to kind of draft kind of like that guide that we would hand out when the registration ends. Yes, that's a year away. So in the meantime, all we have is the ordinance, but we could create like an FAQ um, and have those both on the recreation page and CPW page to help better inform.
Yeah.
And we really hope that we're gonna grow that education when we can do the sticker. Um, and then we have that, that chance for that soft touch for mapping and rules when you sign up and you get your registration. And, and as the ordinance, um, you know, we haven't changed much to public use. So it will still being allowed to be from point A to point B.
But are there, and that's where I don't understand. Like, are there restrictions on age, licenses, which roads? What's point A to point B is my friend's house, point A to point B? You know what I mean? And those have always been gray. And I think people have always interpreted them however they want. And so that's the piece that I'm like, it'd be nice to be able to point to for some of these kids.
Absolutely. I think that, that we can definitely put um, a guide together that speaks to that. But really, they, they shouldn't be using OHB for things that you would use a primary.
Like, I'm going to the store.
Or, or maybe even going from friend A's house to friend B's house and back and forth. You know, we want to see them being used for recreational. I think the ordinance is written that, that, that pointing to point B gives you easy access to.
Recreation use.
And then the, and then the road use guy is gonna do a better job at kind of um, really illustrating where we would, I think that we, they must appropriate kind of OHB uses. So I'll turn it over to Bryce. He's got the map for it.
Yeah, so this is just meant to be a tool meant to, for reference or for analysis as we're talking about public use, or I guess we have private users, public. Public. And then commercially users. Um, and then, you know, I think what we've, this conversation isn't complete without special events as well. Right? Special events are a huge recreational impact we have in our county, a huge recreational driver we have in our county. And so they need to be viewed at the same time or holistically with any commercial OHB regulations or just recreation planning in general. So that's what this map is meant to do, is kind of inform that. Um, it's kind of hard on the screen to see, but trying to make the roads, this is just roads that we could think of in OHB using on the map. So there's little black lines. The black lines are county roads that are paved. Really not where we would expect people to go as a recre, they might use them to go to the recreating areas, but they're just connector roads. The paved roads is not what we're thinking about for OHB use. The yellow roads, and I think there's a couple errors in here, like the sink even moved, but the yellow roads are two-wheel-drive accessible dirt roads. So a lot of the east side, those former mining roads that are used for commercial operations in OHB, they're actually, you know, Public Works considers them two-wheel-drive roads. And then the orange roads are four-wheel-drive roads. Got to have high clearance, got to be able to get over some rocks and boulders, right? So, and then this, we have green roads, which are Forest Service roads, and then there's a few purple roads, which are BLM. So this kind of gives the entire picture of where commercial operators would be going, but also private members recreating on their own, where we think they could reasonably be going. Um, a big thing I see out of this is there's kind of a lack of connectivity between the east side trails and the Turquoise Lake Trail system, which I'll show you is kind of the, the most used. Um, but yeah, so you know, when we're talking about what is a point B, I think this is what we came out of the discussion today, is that these, some people, their recreation is just going for a ride, right? So the roads themselves are a point B if they're the actual kind of recreating roads.
And I, and I think when they're on those connector, like, paving and the paved roads is connector roads. When they're on the connector roads, that they're abiding by Title 44 Rules of the Road Standard. Um, you know, they're riding in the, in the right lane, and the speed limits, and yielding, and, and what, and the traffic rules.
Yeah.
And so this is summer, but adding on winter, you see the purple lines go on. That's our groom trail network. So that's done by High Rider Snowville Court, uh, High Rider Snowville Club with public monies they get from CPW through Colorado Snowville Association. So that's kind of our true, trail network in the winter. You can see it's totally separated by a good portion of land. But what I think is really interesting is if you go and you lay that on the areas of operation, right? Some of the areas of operation, we have four commercial operators in the winter. For the most part, they overlap. Two are in Turquoise Lake area, two are in the east side area. But you can see, I mean, they're operating in where those groomed trail networks are. That's why they're there. One thing I really like about this is we made a heat map. So if you put in all the special events and their root, their routes all at once, and you map them kind of by heat, so density of use, if you will, you get this heat map. And I think this is really informative because it shows where we're seeing, in the summertime especially, a huge increase in recreational use that might not get picked up because it's not under CUP, it's not under OHB regulations. But this really does show that Turquoise Lake and the power line area are used by most special events. CMC Trails is this area you're kind of seeing because there's a lot of winter events there. So that's good to know, like, we know exactly how to identify that use and that heat. And then the east side already has some special event use. And then I think really apparent is that the dam is another huge hotspot for that special event use. So this is just something, you know, that you can lay on there when you're talking about a new special event coming in, looking at what areas are already impacted if they want to try to incentivize it going to other areas of the county that aren't as well, that aren't as hit as hard in the summer. Um, then for discussion, I wanted to put on recreation destinations. So not only the roads, recreation that people would want to use, but they want to use those roads to get to places too. So this is Forest Service trailheads, you know, reasonable that people would want to use the roads. And OHBs maybe to get to some of these backcountry or harder to get to trailheads. Um, there's also group camps, fishing areas. You know, the Mineral Belt Trail, you can look at the specific, what the 100 mile mountain bike race or 100 mile run looks like, just where they go, because those are our two biggest events of the summer. Hiking trails on here. They drove as black, they should be gray, so those would be, those would pop a little bit more. And just some different land use considerations, you know, like Newmont land holdings in the east side. Just demonstrating that Newmont owns a lot of land on the east side, but also showing that if you get off a county road, you are more like, you're not trespassing on the east side, right? And there's just, there's big institutional landowners up there that have an interest in maybe keeping it the way it is, or whatever like that. Um, so the roadways, you know, it's just kind of an important consideration when we're talking about use up there. You can also look at what the public lands in our county look like, knowing that anytime they hit a Forest Service BLM road, or they're in public lands in general, they need to go through a separate federal permitting process that we don't have as much to do with. And then there's some other considerations that are more like environmental. You know, you have wilderness areas, roadless areas. BLM area of critical concern up there on Mosquito Pass area. So really, these are just meant to be tabled on and off as you need to analyze each individual impact. There's some zoning considerations. I know we have, in our backcountry zoning, we have, you know, one of the intents is to have a low intensity of use and stuff like that. And then the industrial mining area, the private land and industrial mining has a lot of regulations that tie to it as well. Um, obviously the road use in the IM is totally separate issue, which we're addressing under these regs. And land under consideration, you know, the water augmentation area, um, things like that. So it's really just meant to like, look at the existing recreation as it is. And as we get more recreation, we can add it on, so it gets that cumulative analysis. And, um, so future entitlements, both recreation entitlements, but also special events can have a really good idea of what's already going on in the county. And if they want to mitigate impacts, they know essentially where to go to do that. Um, so yeah, this is just the starting point though. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna make a static map to hand out to people that really emphasizes those Forest Service roads and the, the county four-wheel-drive roads, you know? And then kind of put some trail information on there as well. So this is where you can park if you don't want to use the county roadways and you just want to get to the off-road sections of the county. Um, or in the winter, this is where you can park a trailer in off of the Snowville, things like that. So, um, but yeah, I don't know. It's a starting point, but I really like it because I think what it helped me do is as we separated out the kinds of roads, it limited the trail network to where you can really see where the users are naturally going to congregate and concentrated, right?
So does the Forest Service cap have a, have like a known cap for their number of commercial users in the county?
They have what are called primary use permits and then special use permits. And so special use is like, everyone besides the primary gets to divide up 200 user hours in a given area of the county. So they have the counties divided up into five or six different geographical areas. So Turquoise Lake is its own area. The primary user permit with the Forest Service basically has an incredible deal where they have a, have a monopoly, that the Forest Service guarantees them 10-year issuing permit. Um, really light user standards, like we're talking like unlimited user days for a lot of these operations. Most Snowville operations are unlimited user days. So.
Is that just Ann and Isabelle? I can't imagine White River.
The same Vale Pass Water Recreation Area.
Really?
They have, Nova Guides has crazy user day allowances. And, and Vale Pass Water Recreation Area has that special fee areas, they charge. And then they actually groom in addition to the commercial operators. So way different scheme than we got going on. Um, and you know, we could move towards a model like that, but right now it's like we have a private group grooming trails for private users, and then they're getting used by commercial users too, without necessarily.
It seems like we're like not sitting at a bad spot right now, but it's like, the harder conversations are gonna be down the road when you're talking about caps.
Right. Yeah, I think this mapping has shown, at least Ann and I, that there's kind of, to think that we've hit some sort of like carrying capacity for commercial operations isn't unreasonable. And it shows like, we're kind of already there with four operators.
Right, yeah. And this will all be really helpful too, because three of those four are gonna be, all be coming in for conditional use permits. So you're gonna get to hear more about three of those operations. Really kind of focus on their area of, of operations. And so having tools like this, I think will really help inform those decisions coming up. But you, absolutely, it's, um, yeah, the special use permits from the Forest Service that are here will probably, nobody's gonna probably get any new ones anytime soon.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're kind of first, first, you're put in the, first in the door, um, kind of determine that use.
Yeah, and once you're in, it is really hard to lose your primary permit, right?
So new user.
Yeah, you basically have to buy the existing operation to get that permit. Like Nova Guides has, like, they just sold out for millions and millions because they have that incredible exclusive permit. Um, and you know, White Mountain got really lucky. The Forest Service actually incentivized them to go to Turquoise first. And when there was very little use out there, the Forest Service was like, please go out there instead of Chop Mountain. Because they were trying, White Mountain also has the permit for Chop Mountain or Zion, which is now the state.
Right across the street.
It's right across the street from their Highway 911 operation, but the state incentivized them. The state was like, please don't go there anymore because they're starting to close down roads. There's a lot of wildlife sensitivity and, you know, winter range there that they want to protect. That means more to them than the snowmobiling. And so they're like, just go to Turquoise where there's already groomed trails. And so it was a little bit of this problem where it wasn't hard to get a permit back in the past, right? We've only recently seen some sort of like tipping of the balance where it's gotten out of balance maybe, and there's been a lot of. But back in the past, it was like, please go to Turquoise. We'll give you the primary use permit just so you can go back.
So we talked about a permit that would kind of model after the Forest Service too, like a proba, a one-year probationary period for the first road use permit with the merit-based increase to go to like a three or more year. If it got the tip, you know, the operator that has the 10-year permit at Turquoise, perhaps it makes sense if they, throughout probationary period, show that their operations are good, that they are able to, because without that county road connection, they wouldn't be able to use the Forest Service permit. So these are really, you know, there was a lot of apprehension. There continues to be a lot of apprehension from the four guiding companies because the roadways are so important to their use.
Yeah.
So, um, we've designed it so that they could all be, come under permit through the new permitting process and give it a probationary period just to ensure that they're meeting the expectations of the permit. And then a merit-based process moving forward. And hopefully this big handoff to rec so they can start that carrying capacity discussion.
Got it.
So, um, that I think is where we're at on OHB, but we're really hoping, our moratorium up is up on December 1st. So we won't have everything onboarded in time. So there is a possibility for a rush of ONG permits. Um, so at least what we will have is a tool that the Board can immediately um, look at use of county roads. And, and something that isn't just open-ended and has a probationary period attached to it. So they'll have something to address the use while they're looking at sustainability. Um, the, another thing that came up that I just wanted to kind of remind me today is when we had our last conditional use permit hearing on, in the, in the backcountry, you know, there was a, kind of the same, kind of just, what thought made me think of it, it was the same kind of theme of, at some point, we may be challenged with looking at the cumulative effect of commercial use in the backcountry. And so staff will be making sure that we keep an eye on that with our quarterly reports to the Board. So quarterly I report to the Board. Um, and that'll be a good time that we probably can just check in on what's happening in backcountry. And if at any point we need to think about the table of uses and potentially pulling something back a little bit. Um, but that mechanism is, is really built into the resolution that was passed. Calls for staff to report on a recurring basis to the Board of Activities. So we'll do that on our quarterly reports, which we are happy to show, share with the planning commission coming up. So in those quarterly reports that go out from the department, they'll also have the link permit information on it. So I just think it'd be really great for the planning commission to start getting quarterly reports from the department. Um, that just kind of tells you overall what's happening, which I think would be really beneficial. Um, short-term rental policy work. Um, so we have, we are currently in engagement with DPS. And, um, they are working on looking at OHB or short-term rentals from several different lenses. What, the first thing that we're looking at with them and what their scope of work has been commissioned with is a policy to really look at where we might need some revisions or edits in our existing policy. Again, I think everyone's aware that the areas that we're concerned about or anywhere that there is more of an environmental concern. Um, and if we have saturation levels. So if there's, again, it's kind of the carrying capacity of short-term rentals aligned with, um, infrastructure that can support it and in different locations. We are suggesting to the Board of County Commissioners. We are suggesting to the board of county commissioners in our budget capital acts, a nexus study. A nexus study would be looking at the impacts of development from several different lenses. What we are proposing is allocate infrastructure, roadways, public works, we're always underfunded on our, our needs for public infrastructure. So we'd be looking at that. We'd be looking at emergency services and housing. And bringing that up now when we're talking about short terminals, because there are two ways. There's been consideration of maybe not being overly restricted unless there is a environmental reason for short terminals. If the impact that we, that comes back to us is more around an impact on, perceived impact on housing, we've considered maybe that there is a future discussion that should be had in either a taxation or regulatory tool in which to create a funding mechanism out of, from short terminals, it goes back into housing. So more of a mitigation measure most likely than any kind of reduction in use. Although that being said, it's really too early in the process to say. But I would say one of the big areas of concern is, is environmental. And so we are working with both OWTS and David Wilson and Robert Crable. Robert Crable is a water engineer that lives in Twin Lakes. And he has donated his time to this work to just talk about the potential of over-maximization of, of systems and the effect on groundwater. So we're really looking at that. We've also identified immediately that we see some need for some additional standards within short terminal licensing. And one of those is going to be, we're still wrapping our heads around it, but the first kind of thought is introducing some type of subject system review so that licenses are issued based on occupancy. So that moving forward, we've got that check off on the subject systems. We've gone back a little bit lately if we found kind of a discrepancy in what somebody asked to be licensed for occupancy-wise and what their subject system in our historic records say that they could technically sustain. And so what we've just been doing right now before new regulations is an outreach and education. We're not limiting anybody or saying they're in violation at this point because we've never been very clear in our regulations that we were looking at that. And moving forward, I do believe that's one standard that we'll be looking to update to make sure that the way in which they're advertising and using them rental-wise in light of occupancy is accurate or is sustained by their subject systems. Any questions on, we will be looking for two public meetings. We'll have an O H V outreach with community to kind of roll out the new process, the road use guide, the license, or the sticker program that'll come out in 2025, and the ordinance and just kind of all of the rules that once the board is giving us the green light. We'll go back out on the 28th, or we think it's gonna be the 28th, some weekend, one day after Thanksgiving, we'll do a town hall. And we'll also do a work session that we'll invite you to with the board on short terminals and the consultants. And then we'll go back out for a town hall meeting on short terminal regulations once we have the draft policy ready to go. We have a building industry workshop the 16th at CMC. And it's helping the local industry kind of understand the energy code requirements and what's required for under the new code. It's, we, we realize we need to kind of shepherd our local industry into our new codes. And so we're taking an opportunity to really do a big outreach and education piece on how to manage the energy code and plan review. So we're doing that next week. Board updates and trainings. So the ad for the vacancies in the board is being published this week on Thursday. We have lots of board vacancies. So if you know anyone that you think would be good, please, please, please have them apply. We have a deadline of December 1st to get applications in. And then we've talked to Dola, and Dola will do a training for us that first quarter. We're hoping for January. And then we're gonna follow that by a local training, you know, just a time when actually we can all talk like, are you getting the materials in the time that feels supported? You know, where, where can we do a better job? And we're also onboarding cloud permit, which will also help us with our land use applications. You'll get a log on to the platform and then you'll have everything the minute that we have it. If that feels useful and helpful, we're hoping it'll do a better job with communication and getting you information quicker. So hopefully, but maybe we just have a session with everybody to find out what's working, what we could do better. Questions. We'll have new members of the board to see. And so it's just good to do a training and refresher kind of idea. We are working on an application for community builders to go out to, for our community visioning and strategic plan. So we've got a group of county leaders that have signed up to participate in drafting the application. It's a competitive process. But if we're chosen, we would go to Glenwood Springs the 6th, 7th, and 8th of March. And we would do kind of a visioning summit. And then from there, we would create a strategic action plan. But it's really designed to include recreation, economic development, small business, the board of county commissioners, county manager, land use staff, housing, public works. So it's really kind of a big, so we can look at like our economic layer, our housing layer, our infrastructure layer. So it's, it's kind of, kind of an exciting opportunity. So if we're chosen for that and participate in that in March, then there's an opportunity for us to go for the technical assistance grant that would follow it afterwards. So getting kind of excited about that application. If we're unsuccessful in being chosen to go through that process, then we would try to mimic that with a consultant. So we'd get that same group together and kind of put together our blends and the scope of work and then put it out for our P. So we're hopeful that we would do that. I think the other thing, other thing that we did that was notable was last week is we met with the community development team. And my feedback is just, I think that team is getting so great. We packed the room. And it's all of the local review agencies. It was just really, both district water and sanitation were there, public works, I mean, everybody from law enforcement to public works to emergency management. I mean, the room was packed with all of our review folks to really help inform new applicants as they come in and give them good guidance. You know, we did that with Gateway, and I think you saw that in our application, that it was a really, you know, kind of real embedded application when it came in, which makes all of our jobs a lot easier. So I guess my report back might just be, and we, we ran that past two attorneys today that helped us look at our 1041 regulations, and they were really impressed. They didn't know of another community that was really doing that model, and they thought that it was well done. So I'm gonna break their arms, patting ourselves on the back today. But we're hoping that, that just, that we're getting, you know, better, more hands looking up at incoming development. So hopefully we get better outcomes. Level seven is in the midst of an annexation discussion with the city. We met, I'm a member of the Housing Authority Subcommittee. And so we all met together to kind of talk about setting the expectation for the annexation agreement from a housing standpoint. So the city is interested and the developer in trying to maybe bring in a LI-Tech project. A LI-Tech project hits that 60 to 80% AMI. So that's part of, of the annexation agreement would be that also, as you may remember, there's an area to the south, not the ridgeline where they were doing kind of their market rate, but in that higher density in the lower portion. And that they would also be talking about a portion of that to be workforce housing. And so those are some of the negotiation points that the city wants. They're, they're looking to only allow them to release a portion of the market, market rate before they would release the other. And an alternative, if they weren't successful, LI-Tech is a very competitive process to be able to get those 9% tax credits. If they're not successful in that, then the follow-through would be that they would go in and bring in the deep infrastructure. So they would then donate the land to the Housing Authority with infrastructure in it. So that would be kind of like next best scenario. So those are kind of the negotiations that are going on right now with the city on the annexation. And so we'll wait to see how successful that is. Of course, if the annexation isn't successful, then that application would be coming back to us.
Is this the, as we know, the Russian property?
Yes.
And so is there any conversations yet about? I mean, we, we never saw the application, right? So we didn't ever get to talk about it. But the fact that it's, it's so much of its own I am for us right now, and there's some pretty big environmental concerns and stuff like, like, is that even being considered when it's being annexed into the city?
So that's, so the annexation agreement is a little more of, of like, like the terms by which they would do the annexation, but the term of the annexation is that before they will annex it in, they have to go through subdivision and/or P U D. Well, they'll have to go through subdivision, potentially P U D as well. So it's for, for the city. So before they would accept it in an annexation, they have to make sure it's suitable for annexation. So that's another one of their negotiation points. So they have to go through all of the same look that they would have to for us, from a hazard mitigation standpoint and a geologic hazard standpoint and recreation and, you know, just all the different lenses. And the roadways and their topography and their, you know, so every, everything that they'd have to review with us in the standard kind of impact review, they'd have to do before they'd even get to the decision.
So they somehow go through that process with the city, even though they haven't been annexed with the city yet?
Yeah, it has to be done in, in order for them to, to, in anticipation. They have to, they won't annex the property until they know that it can meet the city's requirements. That's the term of the, some of the terms of the annexation agreement.
So was really our guy in before it got developed?
No.
No.
It was business.
Yeah.
They didn't have, in my opinion, nearly the.
Geological hazards.
Geological and soil hazards.
They still had a materials management plan that was not to be squeezed in.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, so my question is, and this just is kind of coming up from a process standpoint. We talked to, I mean, that files sparked a conversation amongst this group as to who should be involved in conversations about an application that could be incoming to us. And right now it looks mostly incoming to the city. It seems like we, I mean, I'm already being asked about it all the time, like, what's the deal with it? What's the deal with it? And I kind of had stayed away when I thought it was coming to us. Now it sounds like it's going to the city. But it sounds like there's still a chance it could come to us. But I guess there's no way we can really like just ignore the meetings that are happening at the city. Like being informed about what's happening is still okay. It's just, you know what I mean? It's just like kind of putting us in that weird spot we talked about before of making decisions about an application before it comes to us is not such a good, good idea if you can prevent it. But I guess in this case, if it's gonna publicly try to go through the city process, and then if it failed and came to us, we'd have to know that history anyway, I suppose.
I think to a certain degree, but you know, the attorneys that were here today really brought up such a great point. That if you participate, even if you go to something on the level seven while it's in the city's review, if you nodded your head, didn't even realize you were nodding your head when something was said, sometimes the fact of being there, oh, the county planning commissioner.
Fair to have a bias.
Or, so it's, you know, you can just be physically present and not even be cognizant that you were doing a mannerism or even your presence sometimes can, can, can convey something. So I think it's fair when we kind of give you an update where it's at, but I would probably encourage you to.
No, not really.
Because then there's no question, you know, if, if you have a bias or you went and got some preconceived or you heard something that the rest of your planning commissioners didn't hear that went into your decision-making.
Sure. I just have to, no, I mean, that's what I was saying. It was like, do I really read that?
So I think.
Well, in my job, I have to know some of it. I can't like put my blinders on, but I also, yeah. No, obviously, don't go to city council and like start making comments, but.
Yeah, right, right.
Got it.
So that is, we only have one meeting in December because we're not gonna do our next November meeting. I think we already talked about it's too difficult, so we're gonna hope everybody enjoy the holidays over Thanksgiving and not worry about planning commission. But we do have an application coming up in December that probably will be the lead-on rezone application.
Yeah, it's the Colorado Gold Rezone Application, which is our first proposed rezone of the backcountry zone district. We, we saw an application from them a little earlier in the year that they withdrew. They were coming in under the finding that there is an error with the backcountry zone district boundaries. Now they're coming in under the finding that their proposed rezone is compatible with the comprehensive. So just a slightly different application, but you know, enough to be, go through all the same vetting processes again. So that's up for referral right now, and you will see a staff report sometime shortly after Thanksgiving for that reason.
So I think that's the only things that, there's also a planning department grant that we are looking to apply for. I think, I think it's important to know. I'm not sure how much everyone knows about Prop 123, but we did make a commitment under Prop 123 to increase our affordable housing stock by 3% in exchange for funding opportunities, including being able to help development with 40% of development cost and other funding mechanisms. And one of those is a grant to add capacity to planning departments to fast-track affordable housing projects. By 2026, we will be required to have a fast-track program. So applying for this grant will allow us to either add whatever proposal we have needs to show that we are adding capacity specific to helping fast-track affordable housing projects. Although there's not, there's a, going to be a model by Dola coming out in March that will help us kind of understand what fast-track means and what that expectation is. So this, this grant opportunity would allow us to add either planning, a, a, a staff member or a consultant, or, so we will be applying to, there's several ways that I think that we could add. Obviously, we could always add capacity to CPW. But this is a, a grant opportunity to kind of offset some of that cost. We'll be applying to that as well. I've talked about the nexus study. Our other capital ask of the board of county commissioners is.
We're just looking for an upgrade to our ESRI, which is the GIS software program that's basically standard throughout the industry. We need an upgrade in our subscription level to what is now the industry standard entry level. We are kind of grandfathered into a lower level that's not supported anymore, so it's being deprecated. It's been really difficult for our GIS to be integrated into these new third-party applications that we're spending a bunch of money on because we don't have the correct license level to give us the product to interact with them in the right way, right? So it's just this kind of like, it's taking us extra time, extra effort, and we're losing efficiency in paying for extra services to get less outcome. So basically, we're just mapping everything to a static map, and then when we want to change it, we have to give them a new static map and they remap it. Whereas if we had this upgraded license level, which is standard again, it would just be living on a server and the third-party applications would just correspond and talk to it all the time so that any updates to the GIS data would be picked up automatically and put into the data, right? So complicated way of saying like, yeah, we just want to get to 2023.
We just wanna, we just wanna come back.
Yeah, it'd be awesome. But it costs $10,000 more, of course.
Yeah. But so that, we're asking for that. But so that, we're asking for that and then for the county to perform that Nexus study. We'll look for a mineral impact grant to help pay for the Nexus study. I think a possibility that we'd be successful in that, but so we've asked for the entire estimated budget for that, but we'd be looking for a way to maybe only have to do a match, a grant match if we were successful. So we're just doing a couple things downstairs, like always.
Just a few.
But I think, and enforcement is still happening in the department. David Wilson has O H, or O H B, TOT and OTTS tends to seasonally have a little bit of a slowdown. And so we lost Jake Tomley in our office, but he is, David has stepped up and he's taking in any zoning complaints that we receive. Also in the winter, zoning complaints usually go down because complaints usually get covered up by snow and people are less concerned about them. But he's still, we still actively, if you receive anybody complaining about, you know, a certain situation in the county, please go ahead and send them, we have an online form that they can sign and submit their concerns and we'll investigate those and make sure that everything is taken care of. I am going to the HPC tomorrow night to discuss. There is an exemption of, a demo permit exemption for a certificate of appropriateness on pro, on on structures and outbuildings and such that are deemed unsafe. And as the building official, I can deem those unsafe, but I want to align with what the goals of the HPC are in issuing those exemptions. So going to talk to them tomorrow about kind of learning how we plug into that. And anything you'd most of the efforts?
No, I'm going to a big water meeting tomorrow, but it's not, it's more just general. We're just talking about the interstate compact, right? Dividing water up between Colorado and the downstream states. And not super relevant, not something that's gonna have an outcome tomorrow, but in my opinion incredibly fascinating because the nineteen twenty-two Colorado rubber compact expired. Federal government gave us till twenty twenty-six to figure it out. And the rest of the states have figured it out, but California is objecting. So we're all gonna have, we're in this like hackling process with California to figure out something that works. So anyways, there's a big meeting in Denver tomorrow amongst all the round basin, the the round tables amongst all the drainages in Colorado who talked about it on a more statewide basis. I got another meeting, another all day meeting tomorrow, follow up on today and Friday, yeah, and Thursday, so.
Do you have any update on water enterprise?
So I guess the biggest update on the water enterprise is I thought we would have a little bit more update to share by this time of year. But the big update we have is we applied for a grant from the state called Water Supply Reserve Fund. And through that grant, we're actually getting, we've gotten the rubber stamp from one round table. Now it needs to go to the state and get the next round of rubber stamp in January. And once we have funding, we're gonna actually pay an engineering firm to do a holistic analysis of our water portfolio. And so outside of our jurisdiction, pay a professional who deals with this every day to analyze our water portfolio because it's so small limited and give us some suggestions of how we can most efficiently use that water. Rather than kind of playing by ear or, you know, we'll be understanding that we're gonna be guessing or making mistakes and having to correct them as we go. We're gonna try to get a really solid foundation for an objective third party on how we should be divvying this up so that when we implement the enterprise, it's it's more like a ready to go, on the ground running type of enterprise or, you know, effort by the county. And then part of that grant also, we're looking at the dilapidage, which is the old ditch that's now totally dilapidated. Going into the golf course property. That ditch, if we could get it rehabilitated into a usable state, could unlock a lot of different potentials we have in this county for how to use water. And as I've gone through the dilapidage kind of planning process and got the grant, we've actually found several more water users that have an interest in that ditch coming back online. Like Parkville is super excited to see the dilapidage come back online because they have a water right that they could use the dilapidage for. And so it opens up other users to use it, but it opens up other partnership opportunities for the county, right? How we can partner with people that have more water than we do because that's what we don't have. We have the land, we have the infrastructure, we don't have the water. So how do we kind of collaborate and, you know, combine forces with those other entities to give us more water to use in our enterprise? I think that's my main goal now is seeing how limited our portfolio is. We need to do a good job of managing that limited portfolio, but we always have to be looking at what's next, how we can gather more water to keep that enterprise sustainable, both financially, climate change wise, and keep it as a useful planning portfolio for.
Absolutely.
Question on the dilapidage?
Yes.
I used to be pretty familiar with that ditch, but where is it, where is it, where is it bad? Where did it dilap?
It is, Howard, I can show you some pictures. It's so overgrown from the head gate. You couldn't get water to move from the head gate through, but then there's some major breaches as it goes around the campground.
Where broke out?
Exactly, so what we've heard is, and why needs to be completely reanalyzed is that the last time it ran, which was probably a decade ago at this point, it flooded the campground. And when we walked the entire dilapidage, you could see there's big breaches in the ditch wall there that were haphazardly kind of mitigated or, you know, tried to be repaired at the time, but it would really just require the entire ditch to be recreated. And the survey, quote unquote, just a survey is forty-one thousand dollars, right? And then the work itself, just to pull the weeds out would be another quarter million. And then we'd start talking about, you know, lining it, piping it, whatever it might be. But these are, there's so much money available from the state right now and that's why the state basically encouraged us to go for this grant opportunity, right? We came in with just the dilapid portion of the grant. We're the only applicant. And so the state told us, please add this other part, this study of your entire water portfolio to the grant. That was a request from them at the last minute. And so, yeah, they're like, there's money, please take it. This is the time to get that stuff done. Yeah, so.
Awesome, I was also gonna invite Jackie, we'll hand to one of our, maybe, I don't know, maybe at the end of the year, just to update everybody on on the work that Alvin's doing. You know, we've been there since the end of several grants and really working, they're working on getting some construction vertical. So I think it'd be great for her to come in and give an update, also on the property the county has acquired. And so we'll look to have Jackie maybe come in. I'll see if she's available in December to follow the, or do an update before we do the land use application. And if not, maybe the first of January, it would be great for you guys to kind of know where she's at and what kind of work's being done on housing. So I think, hey, that was an hour.
I have one more question about our board vacancies. How many do we have? Okay, and what are we looking at for the process this time because it keeps changing?
Okay, so this time, I think depending on how many applicants that we have, we may have to do interviews again like we did.
I think we need to.
I think when you were interviewed, okay. So we would do interviews again in December. I'm hoping that December first will be our cutoff for, and that we would reach out and ask for a delegate. I was gonna have CC probably reach out as soon as we know how many we have. But I think that we're looking for a total of three and one alternate. Because.
Is this your last meeting?
I think so, well, unless you guys think form in December.
We might, we might try to convince you to hang around.
I can do December, I probably, beyond December is tough.
Tough, okay. So maybe if we can talk out of the state until December, because we are.
So we have Abby.
And.
Lupe.
Lupe, so, and this, this year Joey's term is up and Jamie's term is up. So the only two members.
They have the option.
They have the option, but they have to reapply.
Yeah.
So I do already have a letter in from Joey. He is asking to reup, so he's already in the running.
I know, a couple of people, so they were gonna contact you too if that happened?
You know what, I have not paid real close attention to my email. I, we had a lot of meetings to get ready for, so I will be checking back in. I had, as of Thursday, I hadn't heard from anybody yet, so. But that doesn't mean that I haven't had a chance to really get a copy back of it.
Yeah.
Okay, but yes, please send them my direction and send them CC's way too, because she's really good. If I may.
Okay, I'll find her to copy her.
Yeah, make sure you copy CC because she's just amazing. Watching my email and and giving my attention if something comes and that we really need to pay attention to. So we would have, uh, three, so we have five regular media members and one alternate. So that means there would be three regular positions open and one alternate position. And Joey's already shown an interest in one of those positions, but. And we have openings on the board of adjustment as well. No planning commissioner can not be a planning commissioner and go to the board of adjustment. But, but we always need really good representation on the board of adjustment too. Those are our bariances and appeals, so I would love to, those are, they meet way less often. And there's some as needed basis, but anyone that has any planning or land use experience or good community experience is really an asset on the board of adjustment. So we're advertising for that and board of review for construction. We have vacancies, vacancies on all three boards. It's in the newspaper this week and on, and it's on our website too. So you can send somebody the website or send them their letter of interest to CC and I and we'll get included in the Nexus.
You know, I'm gonna make this quick.
Okay.
Something that's always been lately more so, a vote of contention on my side is the southern approach to Leadville, County Road twenty, or Highway twenty-four. All of the junk on the east side of the road or the highway is so ugly. I mean, almost every lot, every parcel, there's junk cars and it seems like it's getting worse and worse and worse. But whatever can we do with a situation like that? It's food for thought, I know.
Yeah, we do enforcement on on a complaint driven basis just because we're at the degree of enforcement that we could potentially open up the door to. So we really haven't been, you know, I think the city had been more of a proactive role in going out and looking for violations of the code and and we really have always been on the complaint driven basis. So yeah, I think it's food for that. I I see it to, I was looking at the Osmond, oh, anyway.
Yeah.
Identify, you know, but as I was headed north, I was like, gosh, that used to be such a different looking property. So I definitely would say our approaches, I think that's fair to say. Our approaches on both north and south of this town, we've always had talked about wanting to do some kind of cleanup of our gateways. And so I I'm not sure, I think that's definitely food for that because the things that we address are only when we receive complaints.
We can actually have virtual junk yards.
And and if, and if we hit that threshold, then it's more of a state, it does hit some involvement with CDPHG depending on the type of articles that might be there. If if it's lots of cars and tires, lots of cars and tires, sometimes will become a state issue. So it kind of depends on the degree of, and the type.
Yeah, there are several properties over there that just have like thirty cars in the yard.
Yeah.
Which are, which we do have an ordinance for, but complaint basis.
Yeah.
As far as them all have to be registered, which they're not.
Right, so if I received a complaint, then we would investigate further, go into it. So I guess that's, I guess that's where I would say, I will leave it.
Just in case you want to spend some free time on that.
The only thing that will happen is there will be a lot of meters pointed in all around. So it will open up a very big, it would be really nice to kind of, I, I know it because it sounds kind of even crazy in my own ears, I don't know, like some kind of incentive program for cleanup or something, but I I don't even know what that would look like, but it's always nice, it's always nice to incentivize to do the right thing.
It gives a visitor a bad impression coming into a town.
Well, the first time my parents drove into Leadville, they're like, where did my daughter move?
That's what I was saying, when I first drove into Leadville, where am I moving, so.
Driving through Stringtown, you're like, this is Leadville, huh?
This is interesting.
Stringtown was good compared to what it used to be.
Yeah, really?
That's true.
That's true. Well, I think that the other issue that happens with some of those properties that end up with a lot of things is like, it it rarely ever shrinks down.
Yeah.
It only just gets worse and worse and then once they've been doing it for five years, oh, now you're gonna tell me I have to do it, you know what I mean? And so like, that is the only problem. Yeah, and then, yeah, yeah, it is a super tough place to be.
We took a complaint on State Coach Road property. That's a tough conversation because it's been going on for a very long time. And even though there's not a airport anywhere near, I, somehow there's.
Those airplanes don't even have wings.
Yes. I, you know, it's a really good question and I have not rubbed my head around the initiative that it would take.
Or what it would.
To the countywide, yeah.
Because it's, it's pretty big and it's pretty broad. And I think that if we're not complete driven, then it does make the question when we, when we reach out, what about them? What about them? Yeah, and so unless we're doing, unless we're prepared to really come in, the commissioner running on that platform.
Yes, that made it a policy level instead of operations, that would.
That would be a game changer. That would be a game changer for staff. And that, I mean, that's really hitting it exactly where it is right now is that, you know, we'll, we'll respond to complaints, but it would take a political will to change things.
Yeah, pretty hefty, pretty hefty consequence.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Very excellent.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm moving to adjourn.
A second.
Thank you, Abby, for spending so much time with us.
Yeah.
We are gonna miss you, Julie.
We are gonna, just not gonna be the sweet.
Littersweet, for sure.
But best of luck with your new entrance.
Excited for you down there.
Move, you move.
Chris is clapping, aren't you getting a clap?
You haven't been here very long.